Good afternoon. It is 5:01, the advertised time for this public hearing meeting. Welcome to the School Board of St. Lucie County Regular Meeting and Final Budget Hearing, the date September 14th, 2021. Welcome to all of you. It's good to see a nice audience, and I know we have quite a few joining us through other modes as well, so welcome to all that are with us tonight. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And join us also in the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter Pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. We have a rather extensive agenda ahead of us tonight, which encompasses three different public hearings. So at this point, I will open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of final millage rates and final budget for '21-'22. This time, I'll call on Ms. Thomas, our CFO.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Gent. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was held on July 27th, 2021. The information regarding millage rates is exactly identical to what was presented on July 27th with a slight change in budget, so we will go through this fairly quickly while I still cover the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final millage rates. After final millage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions, at one time. This slide shows the taxable value, millage and tax collection revenue estimates at 100% and 96%. We budget at 96%, and last year, we collected 95.96%. As a reminder, the Board must levy the 3.6050 required local effort millage and the 1.0000 voted operating millage. The 0.7480 discretionary millage and the 1.5000 capital operating millage are maximums. The only action the Board could take would be to reduce those, and I do not recommend reducing. The total millage is 6.8530. The Board does not have the authority to increase the millages. They are set by the legislature, and it is our maximum millage for the '21-'22 school year. This slide shows a history of the millage rates from 2007 and '08, with '10-'11 being the highest. This slide shows the break between the capital operating and voted millages and where the legislature demanded a shift. Capital outlay shifted from two mills in '07-'08 to one and a half mills in '09-'10. Beginning in 1920, we have an additional one mill voted operating millage that will expire at the end of the '22-'23 fiscal year. This slide shows the impact on the average homeowner. We get this information from the property appraiser each year. The taxable value for an average homeowner in the county increased by approximately 13 and a half percent, and there is also a reduction in the non-voted millage by 1.61%. This slide shows the taxable value history. The entire county's gross taxable value makes up the taxes that you will see on the next slide. This slide shows the gross tax collection history, and for illustration purposes, this slide excludes the voted one mill, and I will show the impact of it on the next slide. On this slide, you can see the impact that the additional voted one mill will have on our collections for '21-'22 fiscal year, resulting in $27.8 million in additional revenue. This is the third year recognizing revenue from the one mill, and it cannot exceed four years as by law. The additional revenue generated from this mill will be used to recruit and retain qualified teachers, improve school security, improve mental health services, and fund other essential operations that preserve important school programs. Notice that the increase in taxable collections is not increasing at the same rate and slope as the increase in taxable value. From 2021 to '21-'22, the taxable value increases 9.99%, but the collections are only increasing at 7.72%. That is because the legislature mandates what the required local effort is, and they've capped our other millage rates. Looking back at '07-'08, we were collecting 184 million. Excluding the additional voted one mill, we would be proposed to collect 162.8 million this year. So we are down 21.9 million compared to that benchmark pre-great recession year, and cumulatively 493.7 million dollars in reduced tax burden to the property owners in the county. Incorporating the one mill, we are proposed to collect 190.6 million, and we are now up $5.8 million compared to that benchmark pre-great recession year. However, we're still down cumulatively 417 million dollars in reduced tax burden to the property owners. The rollback rate discussion is something we are required to talk about. Here's a table that helps explain it. In 2021, the taxable value was $26.3 billion. The millage rate was 6.9490. That millage rate generated $183 million. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the same revenue using this year's net taxable value. The calculated rollback rate is 6.4824, so 6.4824 times the current taxable value generates $183 million. Since we have a proposed rate of 6.8530, which exceeds the 6.4824, we have to compare those two and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 5.72% greater than the rollback Here's a summary of the budget. This includes beginning reserves, revenues, appropriations, and ending reserves. Grand total of $752,151,629, which is amended throughout the year by official Board action. Does anyone want to address the Board?
We had no sheets turned in for anyone wanting to address the budget portion or the millage portion of our meeting, so no questions. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, we will receive your recommendation.
I recommend the Board approve the final required local effort millage of 3.6050 mills as specified in the Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final A.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, Mr. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just as a, some information to the public. Mr. Jen explained that the School Board, I was watching another governmental meeting the other night, and then somebody spoke about our School Board, that we are not a taxing authority, and if I am wrong in any aspect, that we do not set the millage rate. Can you explain it? It's set by the government?
The millage rate is set by the state legislature.
We do not vote on the, we do not set it. That's all. I wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
And Ms. Thomas did mention that in her presentation, so hopefully everyone heard it there as well. We'll move on to 2.3. Mr. Superintendent?
Recommend the Board approve the final district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mills as specified in Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final A.
We have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Recommend the Board approve the final district discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.5000 mills as specified in Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final A.
Have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved that the final district discretionary local capital improvement millage be approved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Recommend the Board approve the final district additional voted millage of 1.0000 mills as specified in Resolution 2021-22, Final A.
A recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the Board adopt the 2021-22 final budget in the amount of $752,151,629.
Have a recommendation. Board members, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and a third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
I recommend the Board adopt Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final B, Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final C, and Resolution 2021-22, Trim Final D.
Board members, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That concludes that public hearing, and thank you, Ms. Thomas and your team, for an exemplary job of getting all of those numbers put together and putting them in a form that we can understand. We appreciate it. I will now open the public hearing for the proposed transfer of the St. Lucie School to the town of St. Lucie Village. We have a resolution accompanying that. Is there anyone here from the village tonight? Okay. Mr. Superintendent, we will receive your recommendation.
I recommend the Board approve the proposed resolution in agreement with the town of St. Lucie Village, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We have a motion.
So moved to approve the proposed resolution in agreement with the town of St. Lucie Village.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second again. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now close the public hearing for the transfer of the St. Lucie School to the town of St. Lucie Village. And now we move to our third public hearing. Before I open that component, though, I want to give a few notes, because it's a little bit out of the ordinary how we're doing it tonight. Typically, we would have folks speak to items that are on the agenda before the vote is taken. And all of the forms that we've had turned in tonight have to do with the mask. So we are going to hear the public comment before we take a vote on the, this portion of the public hearing. Now, there are four of you that actually had your forms turned in in time to become scheduled speakers, which would entitle you to five minutes of speaking. However, if we integrate you all into the public hearing speaking portion, the maximum time there is three minutes. Now, for the four of you that were here ahead, if you wish to speak for five minutes, we will recognize that, and you will be speaking first. All the forms will be called in the order that they were received. So any of the four that were to be scheduled speakers tonight on our agenda, everybody's happy with just being called for three minutes? Okay, all right. One second, and I will call on you then, please. Also, before we begin, as we did last time, I would just like to stress that you please be as respectful as you would have the people be when you're speaking. The acoustics in here are good, so when there are multiple conversations going on at the same time, it's really hard to hear the speaker. So I would just ask that you would be respectful as people speak. We all know there will be views that differ from our own, but we wish to hear everyone that's here tonight. I would also ask that you pay close attention to our attorney, Mr. Harrell, who is our timekeeper. And other than the exclusion of the scheduled speaker, there will be three-minute time limits, and I ask you, please, to adhere to that as well. Everyone deserves an opportunity to be heard, and we are eager to hear your comments, so we just want to be respectful of the time limit as well. Okay, we will now open the public hearing for the proposed emergency rule adoption of amendments to Policy Number 2.91, face coverings during COVID-19 pandemic emergency. We will take all of your public comments now. I will begin with our scheduled speakers. Lanell Zelnar. Is Lanell with us? Are there any that didn't have seating available in here that they might be outside?
No.
No? Carrie Daniels. Ms. Daniels, we welcome you to the podium tonight and would ask that you please state your name and address as you get to the podium, and then a reminder that you will have five minutes since you submitted a form in a timely fashion to be a scheduled speaker. Welcome.
Hello. Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Carrie Daniels. My address is 3235 Southwest St. Lucie Boulevard, and I'm here speaking, obviously, on the mask mandate. And I would just like to give some data, some facts, to help you all make your decision. For the week ending September 6th, 2021, according to the St. Lucie County website, our county added 1,986 new COVID-19 cases. Of those cases, 12- to 19-year-olds made up the highest segment of positive cases within the county. According to an article in the TC Palm, which ran yesterday, there were 243 positive St. Lucie County students and 31 staff this past week ending September 12th. The most recent data that I was able to find on the St. Lucie County website showed that over 600 students are out of school per day due to COVID-19 isolation and quarantine. This is very disruptive to their education, especially considering that some students have to quarantine multiple times. I know that a lot of people feel that COVID-19 is a mild disease in the pediatric population, and while it's true that most pediatric patients do well, there are a number who have significant illness, and this is evidenced by the increased hospitalization rates throughout our country. But also, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, with data ending on September 9th, there have been a cumulative number of pediatric deaths of 460, with 17 of those recorded in our state of Florida. And I'm sure we all would agree that that's 460 too many. We currently have transmission of COVID-19 at a higher rate than it was during this time last school year, with more children in person at school, which leads to more exposure and more spread. And it's my recommendation that universal masking with opt-out only for medical conditions is necessary to decrease the spread and allow children to stay in school and receive the full benefit of their educational opportunities. I would just like to read a portion of the February 10th, 2021 article in the Journal of the American Medical Association, which discusses how masking actually works, and it says in part, "That community mask wearing substantially reduces transmission of severe acute respiratory syndrome coronavirus II in two ways. First, masks prevent infected persons from exposing others to SARS-CoV-2 by blocking exhalation of virus-containing droplets into the air. This aspect of mask wearing is especially important because it is estimated that at least 50% or more of transmissions are from persons who never develop symptoms or those who are in the pre-symptomatic phase of COVID-19 illness. Second, masks protect uninfected wearers. Masks form a barrier to large respiratory droplets that could land on exposed mucous membranes. Masks can also partially filter out small droplets and particles from inhaled air." I would like to end my time with just a story that's actually out of Green County, Missouri, and it's a story of two hairstylists who were infected with COVID-19. And the Green County Health Department conducted contact tracing of all 139 exposed clients back to the date that both hairstylists developed their first COVID-19 symptoms. Of the 139 clients, they were all offered testing for COVID-19. 67 clients agreed to be tested, 72 refused. Of the 67 who were tested, none of them tested positive for coronavirus. During telephone interviews, they were able to interview 104 of the clients. Of the 104, 102, which is 98%, reported wearing a face covering during their entire appointment, and the other two reported wearing face coverings part of the time. They also, excuse me, 101 of the interviewed clients also reported that the hairstylist who was infected with coronavirus wore the face covering the entire time. The other three could not remember. And this is in comparison to six close contacts of the two hairstylists, four of which tested positive for coronavirus. And this observational study concluded that consistent and correct use of face coverings when appropriate is an important tool for minimizing the spread of coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels. Our next scheduled speaker is Ms. Palau. Welcome to the podium, and we would ask again that you state your name and address before you begin, please.
Thank you. It's Dr. Milice Palau. Address is 9401 Southwest Discover Way, St. Lucie. Good evening, everyone. We're here again to ask the leaders of our public school system to continue to mandate universal masks in St. Lucie County public schools to protect our children and community from COVID-19, and an option only for medical exemption should be included. The science is very clear. Masks work when everyone wears them. Masks are safe for adults and children over the age of two. And the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Pediatric Infectious Disease Society, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have recommended universal wearing of masks for all teachers, staff, and students in K-12 school settings, even for fully vaccinated individuals. COVID-19 spreads primarily through respiratory droplets, exhale when infected people breathe, talk, cough, sneeze, or sing. The Delta variant is far more transmissible than previous variants, fueling surge in cases numbers in Florida. Community mask wearing substantially reduces this transmission. Like Dr. Daniels said, first, it prevents those infected persons from exposing others by blocking the exhalation of the virus, and most of the time, at least 50% of the time, this transmission from persons or people that have never developed symptoms or are right before they develop those symptoms. And second, masks protect those uninfected wearers. As of September 9th, over 5 million children have tested positive for COVID-19 since the onset of the pandemic. About 243,000 cases were added this past week, and the week before were 252,000 cases. If you do the math, that's close to half a million children were infected in the past two weeks. Hospitalizations among ages 0 to 4 have increased tenfold. Hospitalizations among unvaccinated adolescents have been 10 times higher than those that are not fully vaccinated. COVID-19 mitigation measures are a health equity issue. Many of our School Board members were elected because of their strong and admirable stances seeking to ensure equity in our school system. Given that the state did not approve the option to continue digitally, as cases continue to increase, we're seeing more students being sent home to quarantine. The impact of prolonged quarantines on single parents and low-income students will result in even larger disparities for our community, and since children under the age of 12 are unable to be vaccinated, the only tool that we have to stop the transmission of this deadly virus is universal mask wearing and physical distances, which in most cases, it is extremely difficult to do, particularly in the younger population. The Board needs to act in their best interest. Children under 12 cannot get vaccinated. Children over 12 must rely on caregivers to make safe choices, given our pediatric population no agency over their own health. Some students and staff members cannot get vaccinated, or have family members who cannot get vaccinated due to medical conditions, or they live with someone that have a compromised immune system, and refusing to consider those people and their safety is definitely an issue. Wearing a mask can certainly become uncomfortable, but studies have shown that children ages 7 to 12, of 2-13, have been able to tolerate, and some people have the concern that it may inhibit verbal and nonverbal communication. But studies have shown that they are able to accurately make inferences about emotions of others with partially covered faces. Concerns about reduced oxygen saturation and carbon dioxide retention when wearing a mask have not been supported by data. Measures like a mask mandate could help us pass this surge and allow our children and families to have a safe and wonderful academic year. Miami-Dade, Palm Beach County, Broward County, Alenshua County, Leon, Duval, Sarasota, Hillsborough, and Orange Schools County have a mask mandate for their students that only allows students to opt-out for documented medical issues. In Hillsborough County Public Schools, the COVID positivity rate among students dropped by 23% since masks were mandated by an emergency rule on August 18th. Again, this measure does not have to be indefinite. Instead, you can continue to review the trends and revise those recommendations. But now is the time to act with courage and ethics. It is up to you to show our students that science speaks louder than threats, that safety matters more than politics, and that their lives matter too. Thank you.
And thank you for being here this evening. Our fourth and final scheduled speaker is Sabrina Taylor. Ms. Taylor, we welcome you to the podium tonight, and again, if you would share your name and address before you begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board members. I'm Sabrina Taylor, President of the Legal Women Voters of St. Lucie County. Address 130, South Indian River Drive, Suite 202 in Fort Pierce. One of the first responsibilities of all governments is to protect the citizens from harm. That is an agreement that is made between citizens and elected leaders. The League of Women Voters of Florida and of St. Lucie County, as well as many Floridians, believe that the government closest to the people governs best. Erosion of the power of home rule is corrosive to democracy, leaving local officials stripped of their authority to make decisions based on local conditions that vary tremendously across the state of Florida. Earlier in the epidemic, the governor applauded local governments in North Florida for deciding to keep beaches open of low transmission rates at that time. In fact, in March of 2020, the governor stated, and I quote, "What I think I want to do is to also delegate the local administrators the authority to tailor that as circumstances change, because I think that it is a very dynamic situation," end quote. To limit the will of a local officials on local matters is like canceling out the vote of public, is like canceling out the vote of people that place the local officials in office. We commend Governor DeSantis of his earlier position as of March of 2020, when he said that local authorities know best. The state of Florida is now reporting record numbers of COVID-19 cases, record numbers of COVID-19 hospitalizations, and soaring numbers of COVID-19-related deaths across all ages and primarily among non-vaccinated individuals. The American Academy of Pediatrics has released a statement recommending that all eligible individuals should receive COVID-19 vaccinations, and all students older than two years of age, and all school staff should wear face masks at school unless medical or developmental conditions prohibit use. Families are depending on you, my board members, to follow the science and protect the health and safety of our kids and our community. Our kids deserve to go to school without worrying about getting sick and spreading the virus. Science supports masks in schools. Wearing masks is yet a small sacrifice to make in order to ensure our kids remain safe while going to school, which we know is important to the intellectual, social, and emotional development. I'm asking you to listen to the experts, follow the science, and reject the plan to make masks optional. Masks should be required for all. We stand, the Legal Women Voters of State of Florida and of St. Lucie County. We stand in support of mask mandates for all students with no opt-out exception without approved medical exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. You may now disconnect. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We'll now move into the section of speakers. And again, I will call in the order that they were received. And a reminder that we will have a three-minute time limit going forward. Amber Jackson. Is Amber? Okay. Laura Barnes. And as Laura is coming to the podium, I'll ask Alan Matheson if he would queue up behind her, please.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Superintendent Gent. I am a parent here tonight. My daughter will be speaking as well. She's a local high school student. I'm just, out of the kindness of my heart, I was a former teacher. I was a science teacher. And while this information is great, we know that science and data can be twisted any way that we want to in today's world. We can put pro-mask and we can put anti-mask, and we can use that data any way that we want. But what we are missing and what we are not talking about is that children do not properly wear masks. They do not know microbiology. They do not properly... I just watched somebody put their mask down here. She touched her mask. She put it down. And other people are going to probably put their stuff here and touch it as well. If she's contaminated, she has now cross-contaminated other people if they are touching that as well. So we are not properly... Or we are... The children step on their masks. They pull them off. They're touching their mouth. So any contamination that is coming out of their mouth that they're worried about, they're touching 100 times more because they're moving the mask around. They're playing with it. They're twisting it. They're using it as a tissue. They're throwing them on the floor and putting them back on their face. They're on the lunch table. They're everywhere. So we are not... Children cannot properly wear these face masks. It's... And I also want to talk about, two weeks ago, we were at 30% here in St. Lucie County with COVID-positive cases. We are down in the last two weeks to 15%. Most... More than likely, we have hit that herd immunity, and we are in a downward spiral. So I just implore you to make the right decision based on the children in the classroom. They are touching their face so many more times than they would if they weren't wearing the mask. So I'm just asking you to take that into consideration. I understand the data that's been presented tonight. But again, you're probably going to hear data from both sides. And that's really one of those weird situations that we live in in 2021. We can take data and we can spend it any way that we want now. So I just... I'm asking you to uphold the opt-out option for our children. You know, we can go into restaurants, and the waiters are mandated to wear a mask, but patrons aren't. We can go to a football stadium. 80,000 people don't have to wear a mask. But we're going to put that on our children who can't properly wear them. That doesn't make sense. So I'm asking you to do the right thing for our kids. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I didn't state my address. I'm sorry. Do you want me to state it?
Yes, please.
Okay. It's 5890 Whipper Will Lane, Port St. Lucie, Florida, 34987.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. And as Mr. Matheson approaches, Reverend Mills, you're on deck.
Good evening. I'm Alan Matheson, 281 Southwest Airview Avenue in Port St. Lucie. Meeting approaching and giving data is a good thing. So far, in the month of August, 8,100 Floridians lost their life due to COVID. That's 262 people per day. There are still over 10,000 people hospitalized in Florida. Florida, over the last two weeks, is still the number-one per capita hospitalizations in the United States. Our positivity rate is 20.9%, according to the state data from last week. Just looking at the state data, from the school districts who had an opt-out with medical only, their positivity rate right now is 10.3%. Or twice as much as the school districts who have an opt-out, who don't have a... Only have medical opt-out. But I want to talk tonight about my friend Heather. Last month, she was diagnosed with cancer. And she is now undergoing chemotherapy. She is a mother of a bright fifth grader in our district. If... The day after her first cancer treatment, she was... Her daughter was sent home for quarantine. Fortunately, she did not catch it. If that virus gets into her house, it's a death sentence. And while you guys think about... While some people say, "Well, children don't get sick", it's very short-sighted to say, "Let's just worry about the children", not the adults that they can bring it home to, the grandparents or parents who live in their household. We need to make sure that we're treating this with compassion, for safety, for respect, loving our neighbors. It's something that we can't lose sight of. I don't want to go and attend a funeral from somebody who passed away that it could have been prevented. If wearing masks with only a medical opt-out will save one life, is it worth it? That's something that you need to decide. I'm asking you to pass the resolution with only a medical opt-out to make sure that the maximum number of people are protected, both at home and at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Reverend Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mrs. Superintendent, our School Board members. I really want to reserve my time for unscheduled. Kenneth Mills, I live at 1330 Southwest Briarwood Drive, Port St. Lucie, Florida, 34986. You know, Jesus said, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." Now, when we came to this facility tonight, your security officers, when they addressed us, the first thing they said was, "You have to wear a mask in this facility." You know, even as I speak to you, my five-year-old grandson is home quarantined because one of his students, their parent told him he didn't have to wear a mask. And now that student and his parents are all COVID-positive. And you would send our kids into a classroom without being masked? Are you more important than them? I'm requesting that this board tonight, with a unanimous vote, pass mask mandates for all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Mills. Next, we have Ayesha Nash. And following her is Dolores Johnson. Welcome to the podium, Ms. Nash.
Thank you. Before I begin, my address is protected due to the nature of my job. Do I still need to state it for the record?
No, that's quite all right.
Good evening. My name is Ayesha Nash. I'm the current president of the St. Lucie County NAACP. I'm also a former teacher at St. Lucie County Public Schools, serving our students for six and a half years. I am currently an attorney representing children in a variety of cases. One thing that I do remember about working here is the lack of consistency in messages. We have a model of every child, every day. I'm hoping that today you make a decision with that motto in mind. With that motto in mind, the mask mandate with a medical opt-out would be a no-brainer. If you don't implement this mask mandate, you are sending several inconsistent messages to your employees, teachers, students, and communities in several ways. First, you are telling your science teachers, "I want you to teach science. I even want you to teach it so well that our students are proficient in science and conduct science fair." But then you'll be telling them, "But we don't believe the research of your scientific colleagues, the doctors, and medical personnel, who state that masks work." Secondly, we teach our students, under our social and emotional learning, to feel and show empathy for others. Two of those core areas are social awareness and responsible decision-making. But yet, we are not making decisions for every child. We have children, as Mr. Matheson stated, whose parents have terminal diseases. Some of our students have terminal diseases. I know when I was going through school, and I was a junior in high school, I was very sickly. And so I can't imagine students today who don't have that option of staying home. But we are not mandating other students, who might be COVID-positive and don't know, to not protect their classmates. Thirdly, this is a district that prides itself on evaluating data, so much so that we have figured out how to move students around and test the subjects in hopes to increase our school grades and district grades. But we are ignoring the data that masks save lives. We teach our children to be courageous and to stand up for what is right, even if they are standing alone. I understand what the governor has stated. But I'm asking the people that I'm looking at right now, some of you I have voted for, to stand up and be a leader, even if you have to stand alone and issue this mask mandate. Lastly, you are also not considering the burdens that you are placing on your teachers. My mother's a teacher. She's just entered drops. So I believe she's in year 28 or so. She's near 30. My sister is a science teacher. I believe at one point in time, most of your teachers were actually my family members. They are already overburdened with lesson plans, professional development, trying to do what they can to not have fellow students teach, maintain classroom management. And now they have to decide how to protect their students and their families. As somebody who monitors the political climate, I understand the position that you are in. However, our students are more important than anything that the governor can do to you.
That's time.
So I ask that you issue this mandate with a medical opt-out.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Welcome, Ms. Johnson. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see y'all. Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair, Holly, and members of the board, and Mr. Gent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And I thank you for your service to our community, especially in times like these. And I speak tonight in support of the special policy, the rule adoption for the policy, I think, 2.91. As you consider comments made tonight and your ultimate decision to do what is right and righteous for this community, I respectfully ask you to keep uppermost in your minds all of the vaccines that are mandatory or required before the children of St. Lucie County can attend our schools. And I think that's still so. I've been out for a few years now. Measles, chickenpox, polio, vaccines, all of these. And many of them start these vaccines while they're still babies. As a counselor, a school social worker, I witnessed our health teams go through the health records at our schools, making sure health records were up to date. I recall how other social workers and I helped out by going to homes and places of employment to remind parents that their children's vaccination shots were due or overdue, and that they would not be allowed to continue in school until the vaccinations were updated. These are hard and difficult times. Hard and difficult decisions must be made now. Please make the right, the righteous, and best decisions for our community. Please vote unanimously to adopt this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, we have Stephanie Taylor. And right behind Ms. Taylor, we'll have Nicolette Owen. If you would queue up for next, please. Welcome, Ms. Taylor.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dr. Stephanie Taylor. I live at 5170 Northwest Pine Trail Circle in Port St. Lucie. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent. Again, as I mentioned, my name is Dr. Stephanie Taylor. I'm currently the Director of Pharmacy at Florida Community Health Centers. I'm a pharmacist, a servant leader, past treasurer and current Assistant Treasurer for the Treasure Coast Chapter of the Lynx, and most favorably, a parent of five children, two of which are currently attending school here in St. Lucie County. I find myself as an advocate for the health and safety of persons in the communities that we serve. You know, when vaccines for COVID-19 became available, I was so moved to help vaccinate our way out of this pandemic that my sorority, the Fort Pierce Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, along with many other community partners, marshaled our resources together and registered 200 local residents to get their COVID vaccine. You see, at the time, you had to have access to a computer to sign up. And many of our seniors and brothers and sisters in the Black and Brown communities found themselves at a disadvantage. That was back in March. And now we find ourselves in the same predicament where we're at a disadvantage. Only this time, it's our students. I'm advocating for another preventive measure that's mandating the wearing of masks for students here in St. Lucie County, unless there's a medical exception otherwise. In St. Lucie County, we're seeing higher case numbers of COVID-19 in children ages 5 to 14 for the first time since the pandemic began. As long as community transmission of COVID-19 is allowed to continue without significant preventative measures, we are going to continue to put our children at risk and compromise their safety. Unlike that of adults, children are not yet cleared for coronavirus vaccination and therefore find themselves unable to take advantage of the full complement of preventative measures that help to ensure that they are safe. And that's why I'm advocating for children to wear masks while in school. Social distancing protocols and workplace decontamination strategies, they do help, but alone, they will not mitigate the risk for infection or transmission. The Delta variant is the predominant strain of coronavirus in circulation in the U.S. And unlike its preceding variants, Delta is more than two times contagious. It's also more likely to contribute to breakthrough infections, even in vaccinated individuals. Therefore, layering these preventative strategies is necessary to minimize community transmission, hospitalization, and death. Finally, I don't know one person who has suffered great harms from mask wearing. Although I know several who have suffered great harm or have died of COVID exposure. Aren't our children worth that ounce of prevention? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I certainly meant no disrespect. If you didn't have a doctor on here, or I would have said that the first time. Thank you for being here. Ms. Owen?
Good evening to all. I'm Nicolette Owens. I live at 1333 Pepper Tree Trail, Fort Pierce, Florida. I am what you're talking about right now. I am actually a St. Lucie County teacher. Proud St. Lucie County teacher. Love our county. Love teaching every day. And I do it every day. Because it is my job, I protect. It's your job as well. We vote for you because you hear us. We matter. Our children matter. We vote for you. You have to listen to us, and you do. I'm really here to encourage you because you are listening. You are listening. You're hearing the fact that our children need to still be protected. We all need to wear masks, and we do. I implore you, please keep the mask mandate. It is important. I teach high school level. However, our middle school and elementary school need to be protected as well. I love St. Lucie County. I love our schools. I love our employees, the staff, the custodians, all the people who make our schools work. We are all important, as are you. But we can't do it without you. I'm here to push you a little bit, to push you just to go ahead and say, "Mandating the mask", because you're there. You are there. Please mask... Mandate the mask. It's imperative that you do this. I had a teacher come in two weeks ago. She walked in. She was coming back. She fell out. She went to the hospital, having her back. My student today came in. Can't give you any details. All I can say is, I found out a person and her family had succumbed to COVID, and I had to help her deal. I believe somebody talked about SEL. We are all practicing those tools that you all are teaching us. Thank you very much. I need you to hear our voices. I am a teacher, and I am asking you kindly, please keep and impose the mask mandate. The governor does not understand what we're going through. Do not make this political. All of our children need to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Jason Romano, and behind Jason, Eximiria Betritan? I'm sorry if I'm not saying it well or correctly, but... Mr. Romano, welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you. My name's Jason Romano, 5285 Dunn Road, Port St. Lucie. I'm here as representation for my wife, my kids, my nieces and nephews here in Florida and up in New York. My family has several immune-compromised members. My mother is a cancer survivor in remission just over a year. My father died Christmas of 2019 because of sepsis, and it was because people didn't wear masks when they were entering his room. And it's terrifying when I have to hear that 600 or more a day students are at home because they don't get a chance to speak. We're their voices. We're the parents. We're the adults. We should know what's right and wrong. And if our kids don't know how to put on a mask or wear a mask or how to handle a mask, we're in a building of educators. Teach them. Enforce it. For the people that are in this room right now not wearing masks, when we were told it was mandatory to be in this room with a mask, that's shameful, that we cannot uphold a rule when there are signs posted on every wall in this room right now. It's horrifying. Our kids can't do for themselves. That's why we're their parents. God gave us that right and gave us our children. We have to be the voice because when those kids get sick and they come home, they infect the family, even as a vaccinated person. There are variants out there right now that could still kill me, my wife, my mother, and anyone in my family. It's terrifying. The numbers are staggering. We just need to pitch in as a community. When I was growing up, up in New York, we had to carry a vaccination card to get into school. Chickenpox, MMR, all of that was required. And I believe just years ago, that was a requirement here. When my son first started school, he had to have his immune records from the pediatrician to get into the school system. Well, once the vaccination comes out in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, Pfizer's in the final stages right now of approving from 2-year-old and up, I hope that that's the next meeting that we get to have on voting for mandatory vaccinations for our children because it was required for all of us growing up. It should be the same for now because those that are not protected are the ones that are hurting us as adults or as other children that can't voice their own opinions. So I applaud this board, the school board, Mr. Gent, and the rest of your colleagues for everything you've done for our system so far and for this community. I just beg you to please be mindful of this and just vote for mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Is... Okay. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you for having me. My name's Humana Betancourt. I live at 2350 Southwest Codella Terrace, Port St. Lucie, Florida. So I had actually about four pages to read, and after hearing everything, I'm just gonna speak to a lot of things that I've just heard today. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having this. I'm actually a special needs teacher, former special needs teacher. I have three children that attend Port St. Lucie schools. Last year, my son had to go to his speech therapy lessons wearing a mask. His therapist wore a mask the whole entire year. My son has made little to no improvement since then. My daughter would come home constantly complaining with headaches, and like Ms. Barnes earlier said, kids don't know how to handle masks. Ironically, she brought that up because I noticed that Ms. Mills, in the last meeting we had, you guys had, touched her face 36 times, her mask up, down. She pulled it off four times when Mr. Ingersoll said, "I can't hear you." She touched her eyes, her face, her mouth, and she was quick... It was really quick. As soon as somebody said, "I can't hear you," she took it off. Do you think my son and my kids have that luxury to do that? No, there's consequences. If you pull your mask down at school, they're gonna get... There's consequences for that, and I don't think that there should be... I don't think there should be a mask mandate, period. There's no scientific proof. If I have 76 right here, and I can email them all to you, papers, studies showing that masks are not effective. If anybody here can please show me any kind of test, okay? Randomized controlled tests that demonstrates that using an N95 respirator or actual, any kind of mask, actually prevents this virus, please show it to me. I will give you my personal email, but I want to see because I can give you 76 of them.
Let me remind you that you're speaking to the board, please.
Thank you. Also, on the label here on masks that everybody's wearing, it says, "This mask is not proven to reduce the transmission of disease." Parents here in Forts Inn in Florida had six masks tested for bacteria. They found 11 bacteria, fungus, among other things, and some of those strands are resistant to antibiotics. So while everybody's here saying, "Who's gonna..." These are the names, all right here, are all the names of the bacteria that were found on the masks because there is no filtration, there is moisture in there, there is the reuse in which you said, "We put the mask down, we pick it up, we throw it, it's all over the place. It's cross-contamination. At the end of the day, the masks don't work." Here, I have a graph that shows the Florida counties and the ones that... The blue, I don't know if you can... You probably can't see it from there. The blue line is the ones, the counties that had school mask options. The gray ones were the ones that masks were required. As you can see, the lines are pretty much the same. There's no difference, and I hold my ground and just letting everybody reminded that DeSantis said his order's back on.
Thank you, Ms. Betancourt. Next, we have Dale Galliano and Chrissy Thanos on deck, please.
Changing up, I'm not talking about the mask. I'm Dale Galliano, 696 Southwest Violet Avenue. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring to you and St. Lucie County parents information that could be available to their pre-K to grade 12 children in the school libraries, also known as media centers. Under Florida Bill HB 989, I am now waiting for public records on the books to confirm they are not available to our children, books that are pushing through health and social classes with progressive teachers sometimes using rogue lessons not cleared by boards or parents' knowledge. Florida State Constitution has laws to protect our children, but boards often do not comply. Right now, Broward County Board of Education is under the 17th Circuit Court for lewd and lascivious pornographic material, having 36 of the 44 books. The book, number one book in Florida, is "Perfectly Normal" by Rob Harris, and it starts from age 10 and up. It's 96 pages of cartoon drawings that are explicit detail on changing bodies, growing up, sex, and sexual health practices. What is sex? Highlighting desire, hetero, and homosexual intercourse with pictures and instructions on positions and what to do with your chosen partner. This is for 10-year-olds. Adding to the confusion they put in that in 1,000 B.C., Greek military homosexual partners were in the same platoon, believing they would be stronger. Puberty is covering in this book. New and changing feelings, physical desires, and masturbation with full pictures and instructions on how boys and girls should position themselves and what to do when masturbating. Quote, "Some people think that masturbation is wrong and harmful. Some religions say it's a sin, but it will not and cannot hurt you. It's your choice." End of quote. Making decisions covers abortion, instructions, and legal rights. Big push for Planned Parenthood. No history on Margaret Sanger, whose eugenics push and her, quote, "weeds should not reproduce." Nothing on pro-life, zero. When we took our moral compass of God out of our schools and decency out of our classrooms, we produced an evil that we are now seeing throughout the world. I hope to come and be able to say to you, there are zero, none of these books in St. Lucie County, that our children are not exposed to these types of things, that parents and families are being made aware of what's going on in their child's classroom, being in control with an opt-in agenda on these things, not an opt-out. I thank you, and I'll be back next month with more information.
Fellow board members and audience, I want to apologize. I should have gone through all of these and seen the topics to be addressed because at this portion of the board meeting, it should only be addressing the mask policy. So I apologize. I have gone through and pulled out several that do not have to do with the mask mandate, and those conversations or opportunities to speak will be heard at the end of the meeting. Again, my apologies. Ms. Thomas?
Thanos.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Chrissy Thanos, and I live at 133 Northwest Magnolia Lakes Boulevard. We just marked the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Please look back at how America responded then and now. After 9/11, everyone came together to save lives. Today, we fight over wearing a mask. On 9/11, we gave out masks. People gave blood. Today, we refuse to get a vaccine and wear a mask to protect ourselves and our fellow Americans. On the Capitol steps after 9/11, Congress sang "God Bless America." 20 years later, on the same Capitol steps, our fellow Americans attacked our democratic process. In 2001, we had new guidelines for all of our airports to make us safer. Today, unruly passengers fight with the airline and crews and fellow passengers. We are permanently damaging ourselves. What has happened to us as a country? Today, we have over 700,000 deaths to COVID. Can we please come together and stop making this pandemic political? We are the United States of America. We must come together to save lives in every way possible. United, we all stand; divided, we all fall. We still have many people in my Magnolia neighborhood who refuse to get vaccinated and wear a mask. An 80-year-old neighbor who was fully vaccinated in February almost died this month and now is in rehab. They have a disabled daughter who lives with them, and she has become very ill with COVID. A 39-year-old Annie Vaxer neighbor said she knows a lot of friends who got COVID and did not die. It's not that bad. A minister and substitute teacher was told to plan on working every day all month. They have 17 teachers out. His third-grade class only had four students. Three wore a mask and one did not, and was very rude to the teacher about the mask. Why are children brought into this political fight? We must come together as a country and use all the tools to save lives and be part of the solution to end this pandemic so we can get back to work, school, attend large gatherings, travel, and enjoy life. If you truly care about our healthcare workers, frontline workers, our school teachers, go out and get vaccinated and wear a mask. Each week, the state puts out the total number of COVID and deaths to COVID, but when the state adds up the monthly COVID and deaths to COVID, the numbers are way underaccounted. Why is the state misleading the public with fuzzy math? And I have the chart right here. It actually... I have collected over six weeks that come from the state, and it is off by 7,751 deaths. It's not being recorded correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thanos. Richard Silverstein and Beverly Sukler. Welcome to the podium.
I take your call. Name's Richard Silvestri. Dr. Mills, honorable board members, Mr. Gent. I graduated from the University of Miami quite a few years ago. My major was chemistry. My minor was biology. I spent 32 years in fire protection and emergency medical services, both in the public and private sector, and I came away with a lot of respect for the scientific community. So you've heard a lot of statistics tonight. You can turn on the news. You can pick up the newspaper. You can look at a lot of things. Don't look in social media, and you'll get the data, you'll get the facts. You know what I'm talking about. I don't understand the double speak about a mandate and an opt-out. You either have a mandate or you don't. I'm here, speaking here in favor of a mandate on the masks. They're proven scientifically that they do work, and I'm not only concerned about the schoolchildren, but I'm concerned, and the teachers and the rest, that this is a break in the chain to try to keep this pandemic under control, ultimately to end it, and the children at school without the masks and all, there's no other way we can protect ourselves. And how does it, you know, how do we prevent it from spreading from the schools to the rest of the community? And I'm particularly worried about mutation to another variant that maybe we won't have ever a vaccine for, and that really scares me, that that's a possibility. So I ask you, in all of your braveness, to stick to your beliefs, believe in the science, and vote to have the mandate. Thank you.
And thank you. Beverly Solger, and as Ms. Solger is coming, Michelle Calandro, please. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Beverly Solger, grandmother of two, 2809 Rawlings Road, Port St. Lucie. Well, let's talk about viruses. This virus can be spread through contact, such as coughing, kissing, or sneezing. If you contract this virus, one in 10 will die, meningitis B. In 1967, a virus emerged. From 1998 to 2000, 80% of people died. The Marburg virus. Not many people heard of it. When getting this virus, you have a 50% chance of dying, Ebola. We still have a living, breathing, existing virus today. It has taken the biggest toll on mankind. It is still the biggest killer among all viruses, HIV. During the season of this virus, it takes the lives of 500,000 people annually, and when a new strain emerges and spikes, the rate of death goes up. It's called the flu. Why are we allowing this coronavirus to consume our thoughts and the way we live? It has definitely changed the course into politics. It appears that leaders are using this virus to steer themselves into the arena of control and lawmaking. Doctors and other scientists have swayed from opinion and facts. The truth has become blurred, and trust has become hard to achieve. But the trust to children falls deeply in the hands of the parents. Governor Ron DeSantis has declared a no-mask mandate for children. That authority belongs to the parents. Let the mothers and fathers declare what is appropriate for their own child. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Calandro and Jasmine Cusano on cue up, please. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Michelle Calandro, 3780 Divine Road, Fort Pierce, Florida, 34981. Good evening. I am Michelle Calandro, 3780 Divine Road, Fort Pierce, Florida, 34981. I would like to ask, have you considered the harmful effects of mask-wearing, short and long term? Will you be monitoring carbon dioxide levels in our children if masks are mandated? The physiology of human gas exchange is cited extensively in scientific and medical literature. The impact of CO2 levels on children's cognitive performance is significant. A Harvard study shows that increasing CO2 levels by 400 parts per million results in decrease in cognitive function by 21%. Humans breathe 300 to 400 parts per million of carbon dioxide for human survival and maintenance of homeostasis. Most health departments state that anything over 1,000 parts per million is unhealthy for humans. CO2 levels above 600 will cause physiological changes to multiple organ systems, including the brain, heart, lungs, kidneys, and the immune system. Inhaling CO2 levels at higher than 600 parts per million will cause hypercapnia and has been documented to cause moderate to severely reduced mental performance, and children are especially affected by levels of carbon dioxide over 600 parts per million. Hypercapnia is known to cause the following conditions: drowsiness, headaches, labored breathing, respiratory metabolic acidosis, toxicity, unconsciousness, tachycardia, cardiac arrhythmia, convulsions, and death. Are we thinking about these things? Masking of children for six to eight hours per day is human experimentation. In fact, it is common practice in animal research to euthanize laboratory animals by increasing carbon dioxide levels in this manner. Increased carbon dioxide levels are especially problematic in schools where students require increased concentration and attention to learn new information. These levels hinder students from performing actively in class. Our children are suffering numerous physiological and psychological effects from masking. Human physiology is not debatable. Dr. Jenny Harries, England's Deputy Chief Medical Officer, has warned that it was not a good idea for the public to wear face masks, as the virus can get trapped in the material and cause infection when the wearer breathes in. Have you heard about the study of the asymptomatic COVID patient who was exposed to 455 contacts? All CT scans on the 455 contacts showed no signs of COVID-19 infection. No infection was detected in the 455 contacts by nucleic acid test. This proves that asymptomatic carriers are not spreading COVID and do not need to wear a mask. I often hear the argument that if I choose not to wear a mask, I am being selfish. My mask protects you, and your mask protects me. I ask that people stop it with this statement. Do you know what's selfish? Passing off responsibility for your health to me and everyone else around you. It doesn't work that way. Your health is your responsibility.
Thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Cusano, welcome to the podium. And would Berkeley Barnes queue up for speaking next, please?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jasmine Cusano. My address is 661 Southeast Thornhill Drive, Port St. Lucie, 34983. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to speak against a mask mandate because it's unconstitutional, and it takes the rights away from the parent, who are the ones who should really be deciding over the health of their children. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical masks offer next-to-no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. The size of a virus particle is too small to be stopped by a surgical mask, cloth, or bandana. A single virion of SARS-CoV-2, which is similar to the COVID-19 virus, is about 60 to 140 nanometers, or 0.1 micron. The pore size in a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. I repeat, the pore size in a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. Consider that the CDC website states surgical masks do not catch all harmful particles in smoke, and that the size of smoke particles in a wildfire are 0.5 microns, which are five times the size of a SARS-CoV-2 virus. Wearing a mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2, or COVID-19, is similarly sized, or similarly sized influenza, is like throwing sand at a chain-link fence. It doesn't work. There has been one large randomized controlled trial that specifically examined whether masks protect their wearers from the coronavirus. This study found mask-wearing did not reduce, at conventional levels of statistical significance, the incidence of SARS-CoV-2 infection. In a new study published by the Journal of the American Medical Association, Polish researchers found that within just three minutes, the level of carbon dioxide present in the air breathed in by schoolchildren wearing masks was six times higher than the legal limit of 0.2% carbon dioxide by volume. So let me make this clear. A normal amount of carbon dioxide is, that is breathed, is about 400 parts per million. The illegal limit of six times higher is more than 3,000 parts per million. Imagine a child breathing that in only five minutes. Imagine them breathing this carbon dioxide for eight hours a day. It lowers their immune system, and it works against them in fighting any disease, not just the coronavirus. So this is not about you being so concerned about the children contracting COVID-19. This is about all the money you are receiving for following federal COVID-19 protocols, and in doing so, breaking the law.
Thank you, Ms. Cusano. And Berkeley Barnes, as you come, would Laura Barnes queue up behind? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Berkeley Barnes. My address is 5890 Whipperwill Lane, Port St. Lucie, Florida. Thank you, Madam Speaker and board members, for this opportunity. This week, millions of people around our country will go to grocery stores, malls, concerts, sporting events, and jam-packed stadiums, and even to work without having to wear a mask. Today, you are gathered to vote to continue to keep students like myself and much younger in these masks that are deemed medical devices by our FDA, but without us ever giving written consent to such devices. I would implore you to take a look at basic microbiology before you make up your mind, even though several of you have already, without hearing from the people you were voted in to represent. Please hear me out. Every alternate day, I take PE for an hour and a half at a local high school. During that time outside, hundreds of us students are not allowed to drink from anything but a water fountain. If you have ever watched children drink from one of these, you can imagine how many mouths and saliva go into the water dispenser and drain, yet we are required to get our water from it. In nearly every class, we are also required to use computers shared by all students. There is not one wipe or sanitizing method put in place for us to wipe down keyboards before and after the use of each student. Our bathrooms rarely have soap and toilet paper in them. I try my best not to use them during the school day for this reason. I carry my own hand sanitizer, knowing germs spread more from touching a contaminated surface and then touching my mouth or eyes. So let's talk about masks and the close contact to the mouth and eyes. Masks worn by about 60% to 70% of students on my campus are worn voluntarily. That's all good and well that they have made the choice for themselves, or with the help of their parents or guardians, but they are not worn properly. There are only certain masks and certain sanitary ways for masks to be effective. Let me repeat that. Students do not wear them properly, and I am referring to high school kids, not even the younger kids. I have watched masks be stepped on and placed immediately back on the face, masks touched with dirty hands over and over and placed back on the face. I have watched them be used as a tissue. I have watched over and over as they are placed, they are placed on dirty locker room floors or lunch tables, and then, and then placed directly back on the face. And how many kids do you think bring a 100% sterile mask to school every day? Almost none, for it is impossible to know what sterile means if you don't know basic microbiology. And let's talk about bullying for a second. My peers have not bullied me, but I have had teachers question me for not wearing a mask multiple times, saying, "I am not protecting others or myself," asking us to turn in vaccine cards. "What company did we get our vaccine from? We need to be responsible for keeping others safe." You are unknowingly creating an environment where adults are picking on children and creating a form of discrimination in the process. You are not in the classrooms each day. You are not in the schools each day, and you are certainly not looking out for our best interests of children if you force these dirty, contaminated, and hard-to-breathe masks over our faces. Please, please, please think about what I'm, what I am saying right now before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. And Laura Barnes? Oh, okay. You had two, maybe. Okay. Megan Pereira? Is Megan Pereira with us? Oh, here she comes. Okay. Megan, if you'd just come right up to the podium here and share your name and address, please, before you begin to share your thoughts, and welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Megan Pereira. My address is on Jupiter Terrace in Port St. Lucie, 34983. I'm not here to state science, data, numbers. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family and my six-year-old son. My husband and I have been St. Lucie County residents for almost 20 years. We both attended St. Lucie County schools. We graduated from PSL and Centennial. And now we have a first grader who has been maskless in school since he did summer school. He is thriving academically, socially. After his first day of school this year, he came home and said, "Mommy, I get to see my friends' faces." Last year, when he started kindergarten on 824 in Brick and Mortar, we used his nebulizer and his inhaler every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, because the mask exasperated his asthma. We have not used them once since he started summer school, where masks were made optional. I'm here tonight to ask you to please keep the opt-out option. Just yesterday, his teacher sent us a video where every single child who had a mask on had it on improperly, as many here tonight do. It was below the nose, and there were gaps around their mouth. If I can spray my perfume through a mask and see it spray out on the other side, it is clearly not effective. Unless you're going to mandate N95s and supply every student and school with them, then taking away the opt-out option is redundant. Will you also be hiring more staff at RRA short-staffed schools to ensure the masks are being worn properly if mandated without an opt-out? We wouldn't want to take away from the teacher's job, which is there to teach. Leave the opt-out in place. Elizabeth Jackson yesterday told the TC Palm from Faith in Florida that bringing leaders from various organizations from outside of St. Lucie County was important because, end quote, "They have a voice too." Well, here's my voice. As a St. Lucie County resident, I elect you, not somebody from outside St. Lucie County. And under Emergency Order 6, AER 21-02, I, as a St. Lucie County parent, am empowered to make the healthcare decision of my child. My child will not wear others' fear. If your masks are effective, you don't need to worry if he is wearing one or not. Just as you choose to wear one, which is your right, my family chooses to not wear one, which is our rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Lydia Pilch, Pilch, I'm sorry. Lydia Pilch. Welcome to the podium, Ms. Pilch. If you'd just share your name and address with us, please.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Lydia Pilch. I live in southwest Port St. Lucie. I have five children, and I worked in the pharmacy field for 12 years. The preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America reads, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." I want to focus specifically on the definition of liberty. If you look it up, there's two main definitions. Liberty is defined as "the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views." It can also be defined as "the power or scope to act as one pleases." The United States of America was built on the principles of freedom and liberty, and to require a child to wear a mask for so many hours a day is an oppressive restriction, and it is imposed by authority, all of you, and it is directed toward their way of life, behavior, and/or political views. As you can see, to require children to wear a mask, without question, directly violates their liberty and the Constitution of the United States of America. In our schools, our children are taught about great heroes of history: Paul Revere, Thomas Jefferson, Patrick Henry, who said, "Give me liberty, or give me death." They're taught about men and women who stood up for what they believed in, and they made a difference in the world because of their convictions. However, by covering their faces, or more recently shaming them for not wholeheartedly buying the narrative, they're not getting the chance to stand up for what they believe in. They're not getting a chance to exercise their liberty. I'm going to step back briefly and look at the history of face coverings. They've consistently been used to promote subordination, and even as a way of breaking someone's will. They can be used to delete a person's individuality, and they are oppressive. I have to say, we walked in tonight. I was a little shocked. Everyone sitting in fear, wearing masks. Out in the world where I live, I don't see that. What a crazy place for our kids to be. This mandate is an issue of freedom because it's one-sided. No one is telling them they cannot wear a mask, but they're saying that they must wear a mask. Do what we want you to do. Don't ask questions. Follow the narrative. You're sending mixed messages to these kids. In sex education, the teachers tell them, "My body, my choice." But then the school administrators are telling them, "No, your body, my choice." No wonder these kids are confused. If you want them to be leaders in the future, give them a chance to exercise their liberty. Give them a chance to make decisions based on what they believe in. It's become more obvious that masks are about training them for compliance. What happened to training them to be tomorrow's leaders, like Paul Revere, Thomas Jefferson, Patrick Henry? These kids are our next generation. Let St. Lucie County be the county that stands for liberty. We're depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pilch. If I could remind everyone, please, to hold your applause. Tiffany Casper? And while Tiffany is coming, if Sheri Blinkenstaff would be ready to speak next. Tiffany, if you'd please just come to the podium and state your name and address, and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hi. I had chicken scratch, so I'm sorry you couldn't read it. My name is Tiffany Tanaka Cooper, and I live out in southwest Port St. Lucie, down near Becker. And I wrote some stuff on my tablet, but after listening to everyone talking, it's just kind of, just going to throw away everything that I wrote, and pretty much just dedicate that. I am a teacher. I was also a student of St. Lucie County schools from pre-K all the way up, graduated from Centennial. I used to go to St. Lucie West Middle, where Mr. Gent was the principal there, and now I teach there. And I've been teaching eighth-grade English for the past three years. And I taught English in Japan for less, for five years. And well, when I lived in Japan, masks was just common sense. When you were sick, you came to school, wear a mask, no problems. You got home, took it off, no problems. If you were sick, we were able to teach without worrying that people were going to end up with the flu and all of a sudden, the whole school is out because everyone's sick. But yet, teaching here, last week, I have a total of about 70 kids. I taught empty classrooms because about 90% of my kids were out quarantined, because one or two students caught Corona. And I'm just, we're hurting them. We are hurting them with this back and forth of, "Oh, my rights, my liberty," and, "Oh, the doctor said this," or "Fauci said that." And it's like, we have to just use common sense. There are teachers that are putting our lives on the line to teach, and we all want to teach in safe and secure locations. We want to teach knowing that when We want to teach knowing that when we come home, we're not bringing home viruses to our families. I'm immune compromised. I have to suppress my immune system. I go to work with fear, but I go to work because I love my students. I love my children. I love seeing their bright faces behind masks or not behind masks. And all I'm just saying is, let's just pass the mandate. Let's have a safe year, because I don't want to go home thinking that I'm going to die because I caught COVID, or one of my students are going to die because they caught COVID. I just want us to just beat this virus so we could go back to normal. Because that's all we need to do, is just do what we need to do to get back to normal. Put your politics aside and just grow up about it. Let's pass the mask mandate and just, yeah. 35 seconds. All right, that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Sheri Blinkenstaff and Rob Lord. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. My address is 1631 Southwest Melma Road, Port St. Lucie, Florida. Thank you for the school board today for the opportunity to speak. My son has a speech impediment. He receives speech therapy services at school. He has been in-person learning since last year, when there were, when there was a mask mandate. His speech has regressed greatly, and his self-esteem was negatively affected due to the mask-wearing. His teacher could not understand what he was saying, and she could not read his lips to see what he was saying. This in turn made her ask questions over and over again. "What are you saying? I don't understand. What are you saying?" This in turn negatively affected my son's self-esteem. He did not want to ask questions in class. He had a question he was afraid to ask because the teacher could not understand him. This year has been a blessing for my son with the parent opt-out option. His teachers can now understand what he is saying. They can read his lips to see what he is saying to them. His speech is now thriving a school because the services can now help him appropriately. The speech therapist can see his mouth and can see his tongue placement and give him correction to help him speak more clearly. Also, his learning is now getting so much better. He's now not afraid to ask a question to his teacher. He's not afraid to speak to his peers. He's able to express himself and talk to his peers as well as his teacher. Please, I ask, please, do not take this blessing away from my son. Please keep the parent opt-out option available to us parents to help make decisions for our children as to what is best to them. Thank you so much for your time, and please keep that parent opt-out option available. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening. Mr. Lord, welcome to the podium.
Thank you very much.
Before you begin, let us thank you for your service to the community as well.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board members, Mr. Jent. I am Rob Lord. I'm the president of Cleveland Clinic Martin Health. That's out on Innovation Way in Port St. Lucie. We've been through an incredible last five or six weeks. We've had over 200 COVID patients in our hospital, to a point that was made earlier, and I respect every speaker. We've never had one health condition consume so much of the hospital resources, to the point that we had to stop doing elective surgeries. And I promise you, people that need open-heart bypass surgery probably don't feel like it's elective, but we've had to delay those surgeries. So it's a critical situation. We've had a reduction in our cases recently. We're very happy with that. I want to speak specifically about children. We have had very few hospitalizations of children in our community. We're very fortunate, and that's one of the bright spots of the pandemic. Currently, we don't have any school-aged children in our hospital, and I want to get that on the record. That being said, I think it's important for me to note that when we get very sick children, we tend to transfer them to one of the children's hospitals, either to the south of us or to the north of us. And the only pediatric death that I'm aware of to come out of our community, that child passed away at one of the hospitals in Orlando. And my thoughts and prayers, our thoughts and prayers, I'm sure all of us, go out to the family members and the loved ones of that child. Other places across the state, that's not been the case, and we've seen all of that. The weekly situation report put out by the Department of Health has been referenced with the infection rates for children being higher than in any other age group. Comments have been made about masks. Masks are not perfect. Masks do not prevent absolutely the spread of this disease, nor do vaccinations. The reality here is that there are different masks that provide different layers of protection, and how they are used does affect how effective they are in preventing the spread of disease. But masks are effective, and there's a growing scientific, a body of scientific evidence that suggests that. And I can go through that if someone would like. But throughout this process, the Cleveland Clinic, which is one of the finest healthcare organizations, I believe, in the world, has relied on the CDC, and more importantly, the Infectious Disease Society of America. And the recommendations from both those organizations now are that those who are fully vaccinated should wear a mask indoors and in public if you're in an area of substantial or high transmission, and those who are not vaccinated should continue to do so. And it's recommended universal masking for all teachers, masked students, visitors, and K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. Returning to schools is critically important. It's the best way to learn. It's how the kids develop social and emotional skills, and I want to see them in school. I'm sure we all do. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I don't think it's for me to say what you should or shouldn't do. I will say that masks work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lord, for being here tonight. That concludes the speakers that we have that listed addressing the mask situation. One second, if you'll bear with me. That particular one listed multiple items. So I'll wait until the unscheduled speakers for that. Okay, we have reached the end of all that were specific about masks, with the one oversight that I let get by me, which I apologize again for. Mr. Jent, have your recommendation, please.
Yes, ma'am. Before I read the recommendation, I just want to state for the public, and I give a handout to the board members...
Excuse me. I did not get my opportunity to speak, please. I would like that. My name is Kim Holland, and I was here at a quarter to five, turned my paperwork in.
You have multiple items on your request to speak.
I would like to speak upon the mask, please.
Mask and only mask, please.
Thank you. My name is Kim Holland. I live in Tradition Port St. Lucie. God's Word said that children are fearfully and wonderfully made, and they were knit inside their mother's wound, and God counts every hair on their head. God's Word also says that He did not give us a spirit of fear...
Ms. Holland?
...but a power of love and of sound mind.
Ms. Holland, let me remind you to speak to the board, please.
Thank you. And so I am here to voice my words on, I will not ask your board members to please do not suffocate these children for a lie. We have heard testimony after testimony of real cases of children's learning disabilities, the pros and cons to masks. Today, I fight for our children, and there is also a thing now talked about shedding as well, and why we are considering to break the law. Florida State Constitution law passed July 1, 2021 was the parent right. Please read it. By law, you are not allowed to administer health without a parent's consent. Mandates are not law. It does state specifically that Florida Supreme Court has likewise recognized parents' fundamental liberty determining the care of upbringing of their children. These rights may not be intruded upon, and a fundamental right of privacy, the applicable standard to review requirements of that statute will survive the highest level of scrutiny. I promise that if these mask mandates go through, there will be legal litigation, and we don't want to tour more discord. We want to have unity. Furthermore, the Bill of Healthcare Practitioners and his employee must consider parental consent, which I know is what we are here for today. Regarding wearing masks, when you inhale 21.9% of oxygen, the body, 16.9% comes out. 4% of that fuels your body. Wearing a mask constricts the suffocation and breathing. So we've heard a lot of that, so I'll skip over that. Lastly, folks, what I wanted to make sure that people and that you folks understand is it is against the law. It is against the law to enforce these mandates. That the local people have nothing against wanting to wear a mask, but those that want to use their own levels of health and their own decisions is very important. Lastly, and quickly, I would just like to share about, now that we've discussed suffocation, that there are things of spike protein that are autoimmune system and is caused shedding and transmitting. Those that are vaccinated are, in fact, causing some of these concerns, and I encourage you to look up these things. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Superintendent, we'll try again.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I read the recommendation, I do want to read into the record and for the public the information that I shared with the board before the meeting. And there'll be a lot of numbers here, and I will not go too fast. 88% of our students are currently wearing masks as of the end of last week, September 10th. At the end of last week, we saw 34 of our schools with a decrease of positive cases over the last two weeks. Five schools saw an increase, and in that increase, it represented 15 students total. Over the last two-week period as well, we have seen a 35% decline in positive student cases in our schools. That amounts to over 130 students. That coincides with the Health Department, which reported last week as well, countywide, a decrease of 20% over the last two weeks. With our student quarantines, which is a major challenge for us, we've had over almost 1,000 quarantine decrease, or 38%, from September 3 to the week of September 10. With our teachers themselves, we've had a decrease of 41%, going from 29 positive cases to 17. This is, you know, a decline of 12 cases over those two weeks. On our website is the COVID dashboard, and then here is it... What I want to share with the school board is that that dashboard represents community cases for students and staff, as well as school cases. It really is a combination of what's going on in the community, as well as in the schools. So it's really not an accurate reflection of the numbers in our schools, and that was brought to my attention today. So we're going to adjust that. Our surrounding school districts report only the school cases on their COVID dashboards, those cases that are, where the cases happened in the school center themselves. So you really can't draw comparisons regarding the surrounding districts, because you're really not comparing the same, you're not comparing really apples to apples. We have our students approximately 32 hours per week in our school centers, leaving 135 hours when our students are not in the building and are at home or in the community. In an effort to help our students get back from the quarantines, which has been a challenge for us, we've been able to open up testing sites. Currently, we have a site at Manatee and Fort Pierce Central, and over the last few days, we've been able to test almost 500 tests, 471 to be exact. And then if a student goes in there after their five-day, or on the fifth day, they can come right back to school if they test negative. Two additional sites will open tomorrow at Lincoln Park Academy and Port St. Lucie High School. That information will be on our website, and we'll send information out to the parents as well via social media. Really, this is an advantage to our students to try to get them back in school, and our staff members as well, as quick as we can. I also want to share with the board the tremendous amount of work that our staff has done to work with the overloaded Health Department, Department of Health in St. Lucie County. We pretty much conduct almost 90% to 95% of the contact tracing for all the cases. We do this very, very well, as good as anyone in the state, maybe anyone in the country. We assist also with contact tracing for staff members. We do the majority, over 90% of the parent notifications. We do the issuance of return dates. We track the number of, the COVID number, positive cases in the quarantines. We have the data collection, the analysis, and the reporting tools. That's on our webpage every day. It coincides with our Skyward system. We've also, two weeks ago, implemented a COVID hotline for parents that goes directly to the superintendent's suite, to our staff up there, to answer the sites so that parents can have the accurate information. As was supplied to the board maybe yesterday, when students are quarantined, they're not marked absent, the state has implemented a special attendance code. When students are quarantined, there should be issued a computer. Teachers should be publishing the courses, the assignments, and the lessons in campus, and our teachers have done a remarkable job with this. Is it perfect in every case? No, but our teachers really, as they did last year, have stepped up to the plate, and our administrators, as have school and district staff. We just added quarantine support teachers to every school after hours so that these teachers can reach out to the students to try to assist them and to help them to get their work done, especially those students that are struggling. The process supplements any support that they have from the classroom teacher. And again, we just recently started that. We have a cadre of over 17 teachers that are doing that, have been trained, and are being paid. And then finally, we'll be instituting a student vaccination drive, and this was really initiated by a board member, Mr. Kelly, where students who have, will go and get vaccinated, probably during the month of October, will, it'll work, it'll come out in the next couple of weeks. We'll get a $25 gift card while the supplies last to Walmart, I believe, and that's sponsored by Tom Jones and the Education Foundation. So I wanted to share that information with the board, and you have that in writing as well. The action I recommend the board approve of the proposed emergency rule adoption of Amendments to Policy Number 2.91 as submitted.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly?
I'd like to move approval. Second, adoption of the Amendment Policy Number 2.9391.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And Ms. Ingersoll, I heard a second. We are now open for discussion amongst board members. Anyone need to be recognized to address it? Dr. Mills?
Okay, I want to address the young lady who said she's... Wanted to address the young lady who came up and said she saw me touch my face 30 times. You proved my case for masking. Because if I touched, if she counted every single time I touched my face, can you imagine how many times our children touched their face? And as for freedom, what about all of the folks that came up and spoke in that mic without masks? The people who had their mask on had to come behind them folks and speak. They want the freedom to stay well. But in talking in that mic, germs just went everywhere. Also, for the last year, neither myself nor my grandchildren nor my children had a cold. Why? Because we wore masks, we social-distanced, and eventually, we all got our vaccines, all of us that were able to get vaccinated. I have a 16-year-old who has an immune-compromise system. The doctor said he would not live by seven. He's now 16. We have done what we could to keep him well, but before COVID came out, he stayed sick. He went to regular school, public school, stayed sick. Asthma stayed flared up. Colds back and forth. After COVID came out, and we all masked up, social-distanced, my child has not been sick in over a year. All of the data and the science I heard tonight, but what's most important to me is the experience. Now, when I took my mask off, I took it off because I felt more comfortable because I had the vaccine. And right now, Delta is the unvaccinated virus. It's the unvaccinated. had the vaccine. And right now, Delta is the unvaccinated virus. It's the unvaccinated that are in the hospital ICUs, and is preventing others from being able to get surgery. They're taking up the beds. And I'm here not for myself and just my family, but for you and your family. So you made my case with saying, and then it's kind of eerie that you would have my picture so many times on that, that poster. But you did thank you, because in taking account of how many times I touched my face, it actually proves my point. Now, there is another mutation that's on its way here. And I'm told this mutation by medical, the medical field, it's more deadly and it's more contagious. And we've got to do something about COVID-19, because the version of Delta has completely overwhelmed our community, much less other communities. So it's not political for me. It's about my freedom, too. And just because it's the law from the governor that says to us, "You cannot mandate masks", doesn't make it right. There used to be a law that said, "You cannot run away if you're a slave to freedom." You could not hide a slave that was trying to escape from oppression and mistreatment. It did not make it right, and it does not make it right today, and, and, and it's very, it's also very disrespectful for you, for you to speak while I'm speaking, because I heard you, I was quiet, and I respected you, and I expect the same thing from you. Respect my opinion. If you want me to look after your freedom, look out for mine's as well. This is a deadly virus. I want my children well, and I know you want your children well as well. So something's wrong with this picture. And I just wanted to make my statement in regards to that, I want to say one more thing. You know, it's strange how cold people can be until it hits your home. Now, my six-year-old grandson was quarantined Friday because there was a kid in his class who had COVID. The kid's parent had opt the kid out. The kid was coughing in the classroom, had no mask on. And my six-year-old said to us, he didn't have to wear a mask. His mommy told him he didn't have to wear one. Because that one kid caught COVID, you got a whole half a classroom that's quarantined now. So we've got to just, we've got to really wake up and see the facts as it is. And because of the one quarantine, my family, I'm trying to take half of the kids while, you know, the parents look after the one that's quarantined. It's a mess at home. We want our kids to stay in school, and we need to do everything possible in our might to ensure that we can control and defeat this virus and keep our kids in school. We need to make sure our kids are safe and that we don't have these huge quarantines. And if we can do that through mandating rather than giving these people option who think they have all the right and freedom to impose on my health, then we need to do it.
Other board members? Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Mills. I wanted to, I was going to read some emails that I received, well, portions of it anyway, because, but I wasn't expecting, you know, this, the speakers and what they say. So I'm going to forego that, but I am going to read some things that I had written. So this district, this is a data-driven district. So I've pulled some information from the superintendent and the district website, and this is what I discovered. Just looking at the numbers, they indicate that the schools that have had the most opt-out have the highest COVID cases. Now, I understand from Mr. Jen that this is a community aggregate of numbers. It's not just the, the students. But if you're looking at the numbers, this is what you see. And I would like some more clarification on what that, what is actually represented on the, our COVID dashboard. Just looking at the numbers, they indicate that the schools that have the highest opt-out have the highest COVID cases. For example, St. Lucie West Middle, as of 9/13, 11, 111 cases with 173 opt-out. Treasure Coast High, 106 cases with 443 opt-out. Oakhamock, K through 8, 81 cases with 174 opt-out. Fort Pierce Westwood, 81 cases with 143 opt-out. Dan McCarty, 10 cases with 12 opt-out. Samuel Gaines, 16 cases with 30 opt-out. And C.A. Moore, four cases with one opt-out. This does not include the numbers quarantined. The positivity rate, as we heard in, per Florida Health Department, was 20-point-something percent. After our last board meeting, the superintendent put in place a mandatory mask mandate for our teachers and staff, and I quote, "Mandatory mask for all our employees. Rational is really quite simple, to model our students, or for our students, the expectations, as well as follow the signs." He further emphasized that we need to listen to the doctors and that the health and safety and welfare of our boys and girls and young people and our staff and teachers are his highest priority. I echo Superintendent Jen's sentiments. Your health, safety, and welfare is my concern as well. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, as the other board members will or have had an opportunity to speak on their behalf. Having said this, I believe we must look at our mitigation strategies, knowing that this virus is worse today than it was a year ago. But we, as a community, are not giving it much credence, not taking it as serious as we did then. A second-grade teacher at St. Lucie West K-8 wrote, and I quote, "Work has become the scariest place to be," but she goes to work because of her resiliency, courage, and commitment. She or they needs to be protected. Our core mission is teaching and learning in a safe and healthy environment. If the mitigation strategies we have in place worked last year, they should be reinstated, all of them. Ventilation, screening, and smaller-sized classes, social distancing, et cetera. We should be reimagining and personalizing the way we teach. Another concerned parent said, "Feelings and options do not matter when the science is clear. A mask is the best resource we have to keep unvaccinated children under 12 from getting the virulent Delta variant. Given the fact that we will have full schools unlike last year, and real social distancing will not be possible, strongly encouraging mask wearing is not enough. Encouraging hand washing is not enough." Again, a sampling of the emails I received. I hear what our teachers and staff, students and community, what you're saying. We must think globally, but act locally. What is in the best interest of St. Lucie County School District? The Delta virus is real, and I agree with Dr. Mills. We are in a war. The real enemy is the, is the virus. It's not me, and it's not you. For our struggle is not against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against the authorities, against the powers of this dark world, and against the spiritual forces of evil in heavenly realm. We are in this together. Let's stop fighting each other and unify against the real enemy. And not to the superintendent, Simon Sinek quoted, "A crisis is a great revealer." I would like to think that it would reveal that the community can trust that I made a decision to do the right thing. I echo what Mr. Jen's grandson said when questioned about his first day at kindergarten. He said, he made a friend, and went on to explain that he loved her. When asked why he loved her, he said, "Because she's his friend and he cares about her." I totally understand where he's coming from. Out of the mouths of babes. I love my community. I love our students and educators, and I care about you. So I must and I will do the right thing. To reiterate what the superintendent said, the health, safety, and welfare of our boys and girls and young people and you or staff and teachers is his, and I'm adding, it is my highest priority. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms.?
Let the, let the young guy.
Yeah. Mr. Ingersoll?
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate that.
Don't give me a hard time, okay?
Don't give me a hard time. I do appreciate everyone coming out and speaking their voice. Democracy has taken place, and we had the opportunity to listen. And it does, does spark a lot of interest and, and thoughts that go through my mind. And I, we do look at the numbers, and I do appreciate Mr. Jen putting the numbers together and seeing we are in a decline. But Mrs. Richardson, I heard your, your numbers, and, and I can use numbers, too. We have 11% in the district adopted out, and we only have a 1% to 2% COVID rate. So you can manipulate numbers, just like someone said either way, just like I just did. The, the numbers that we really should be looking at, and the whole issue we should really be concerned about is the 2,700 students that got quarantined last week and the 1,600 students that got quarantined this week, and what about, God forsaken, the other two months ago, that all the students are getting quarantined? Because the third grader that goes to school and misses out on math assignments and math quizzes and getting that education will be behind, and we will suffer. That is my concern. We need to be discussing education, because the mask mandate has taken up two meanings. And, and I know it's important, and I know people have rights, but children are suffering every time. And Mr. Superintendent, I've told you, we've had this conversation before, we have our, our leadership spending days calling students about quarantine. It's like the, we have our assistant principals, we have our principals, we have leadership spending time rather than going in, working with teachers. We have coaches doing this. Instead of going in and working with teachers, we have them calling all day. On bigger schools, it takes almost all night to get a whole parent to let them know that your children can't come to school. There's a problem with this issue. Yeah, a mask is an issue, but the bigger issue is kids are missing out on education. We talk about, you know, wearing a mask. I look at Martin County, they're not wearing a mask. 885 of their students had COVID. I look at Indian River, they had a mask update mandate, and they exploded. I look at Okeechobee, I don't even know what Okeechobee's doing, and they have 3,000, 3,500 and some odd students. I was just watching the news then, and this is off the top of my head, 3,500 students that have been tested positive. And I'm not sure what they're doing, but we just have to be vigilant.
22%.
22%?
Okeechobee.
Okeechobee?
Yeah.
Do they have a mask mandate, Jack?
Uh, I think they do. Similar to ours, I think. No?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know. But I'm just giving you the numbers in the county. For, for, for a school district that has about 8,000 or 10,000 students and have 3,500 or something like that, that's, that's crazy. You look at ours, and we are doing well. I think our teachers are doing well. I think our principals are doing well, our assistant principals are doing well. But we have to do something about the quarantine. We, we have to take the responsibility away from the school district and give it back to the Health Department, just like other counties in our community, just like other counties in Florida. That is something we need to be discussing. The mask mandate is 10%, that's 5,000 students, 11%, I'm sorry, doing the math. That's 11, that's 5,000 students are taking their rights away. I don't think they're spreading the disease. I don't think they're the ones being impactful, because even if the student does have to wear a mask, or, let's say that student is still wearing a mask and catches COVID, the people around that student still have to get quarantined, too. It doesn't matter if they were wearing a mask or not. My other thought is, with this whole mask mandate, is where, where do you think most of the, this disease is being caught? I would probably say in the cafeteria where they're sitting next to each other, eating their food, putting their food down, when they're not wearing a mask or not even, not even able to wear a mask. What else are they doing it? We got guys out there playing football and all this other stuff. You know, it's just, the whole mask issue shouldn't be this way. We just need to get back unified, like Mrs. Richardson said, and go back to learning, teaching, where you can see a teacher's face, be able to understand. I mean, our children are suffering in grades K through 2. Our teachers are doing the best job they can, but how do you learn pronunciation without seeing a teacher's lips and moving? That, that's where I'm at.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. May I have the opportunity to respond? Mr. Ingersoll, I, I'm sorry.
Could you hold one moment, Ms. Richardson? Let's have Mr. Kelly have an opportunity first, and then, Mr. Kelly?
Well, I appreciate everything that was said here tonight by the board members and everyone out there. The reason I, I supported that motion and made it right away, just so you understand, the motion that we have out there, because a lot of people may not know, it's to keep the same policy that we put in one month ago, the exact same policy that we put in. I have no reason to think that any of the figures that were given by our superintendent are surreptitious in any way. I believe every figure he gave us. I happen to know that it is, it's about 88% of our children are wearing masks. You can go to the high schools, and you'll see it's a lot less, which I actually did. I actually, I actually went, I need to see everybody. I, I actually went and watched the kids get off the buses, rather than go into schools, Mr. Jen. I didn't want to do that, but I'll let you know. But I watched them get off the bus, and at one school, actually, one school, 100%, every kid that got off that bus had a mask on, every kid. I went to the high schools, and it was less, yes. It was maybe 80%. This is, as the one lady said about being proud of the teachers and the people she works with in St. Lucie County and everybody that live here. I am so proud. Troy gave you the right figures. If I was in Okeechobee, I would be jumping up and down on the dais, probably closing some schools up, and I'd be on the other side of this motion. I, I would be, absolutely. It's, it's out of control. But I want you to look at something differently. This, this motion that's on the floor will give us the same policy, which has worked well so far, and, and we are going down, we are going down. And a lot of people believe, and talking to many doctors, my own doctors, my own people from, from everywhere, doctors say masks work. The masks do work. They absolutely work. And I know everybody has your different associations with them. My family, I mean, they're out of control. They come to the dinner table with masks on, and I told them they can, they can take them off while you're eating at my house, but they, they go pretty far with it, you know? I think, I think Troy said it in, in one way. I'm going to say it in a different way. The mask, the mask situation, we've been talking about this for, it feels like forever. I, I don't know. I just, it's been going on forever. Masks work. They absolutely do, and I promote them. I think that everybody should wear a mask where possible. You also have an opt-out. You know, I just think that if the parents don't want your children to wear a mask, or if they have a, a problem, a problem with it, they should have that freedom to say, no, they don't want them to wear a mask. I know that there are some kids, and I'll divulge the fact that my daughter and my wife are both teachers in the school system, and I have many, many friends in the system, and they're going to be pretty upset with me tonight, some of them, but most of them aren't. They are not going to be. Most of them, most of the teachers and the principals that I've talked to, Mr. Jen, agree with the policy that we have. I'm going to say that right out, and I've talked to quite a few. Putting that aside, please, don't take this any other way than the fact that masks work. I know they work. You all know they work, okay? If you don't want your child to wear one, that's, that's your God-given right, and I think- If you don't want your child to wear one, that's your God-given right and I think if we vote that way, that's the right way to go. If we didn't have 88% of our children wear a mask here, I'd go the other way. And if it changes down the line, which it could in a month from now, my vote could go the other way. I don't think it is, I hope it doesn't, and I hope you all are with me that it doesn't change, that it keeps going down. I hope it does. But here's the thing, and I'm going to lean in. I want everybody to lean in, God cut me off. Lean in because this is where it's at, this is what it's about, folks. Let's put the masks aside, okay? Decide what you want. If you don't want your child to wear a mask, if it passes tonight, you have that option. There's going to be different votes here tonight than we voted on the same thing a month ago. There'll be different votes tonight. I'm trying to stay consistent and I've always tried to do that, but I would change, like I said, if it was anything like Okeechobee. Please, put the mask issue aside. If it changes, it gets worse, we will address it. And as people said, we work for you. We don't work for Governor DeSantis. I got elected from you. And I'm going to tell you this from my heart because it got political and I don't have anything political. I'm not running for anything in the near future or the far future, everyone knows that. There's nothing political about what I'm going to tell you, it's just common sense. The mask thing is good, it works. Your children, your children wear masks, and I'm speaking to everyone here, especially everyone here, to school. When they wear the masks to school, they're what, I'm going to guess, six hours, seven hours a day, Mr. Jen? Donna, you would know, huh? Maybe 35 hours on the bus, maybe 40 hours a week. The rest of their time, the other seven days, the other two days that they're not in school or wherever they are on vacation or all summer long, they're not in school. I don't know if they're wearing masks or not. So it's not just that time in school, which is a small amount of time compared to a person's hours they put in a week or a child's hours. And it's much different from an eight-year-old to a 14-year-old or 16-year-old. And again, here's the thing, I digress and I'm sorry, but the mask thing, it works, please get off of it. Would you do this? This group that was here tonight, Debbie, I know, I was looking at you and everyone, this group that was here tonight was very passionate. There were some things that were said, very few things that were said that may not be true, may or may not be true, people who were a little over-passionate or whatever, but you all, I don't think there was much here on a political basis, I couldn't tell about that. You all were here passionately on each side. Can I get you to be as passionate about this? Masks only work part-time, they're only in our school system, seven hours a day or whatever, but if you get a damn vaccine, folks, it's with the kid 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Let's get these kids vaccines and can I get you all to get out there and promote the vaccines as much as you're promoting against the masks or for the masks? The vaccines work, we know they work. I've never heard anybody that I know with any common sense say that the masks don't work, I mean, the vaccines don't work. They work, they work seven days a week, 24 hours a day. That's the way to get rid of this damn problem that we've had for two years. Get everybody vaccinated. It looks like December 1st or so, in beginning of December, the young kids, our young kids in grammar school, Mr. Jen, I don't know if you've heard anything, there may be a vaccine out by that time for the kids and I know that they've got to be very careful and go slow with it. Vaccines work, they work for me, they work for everybody I know. Let's talk about getting these kids vaccinated. We've done everything we can, we're on a roll here, we've got all kinds of programs going, Mr. Jen. Get off that phone, come on, I got like my grandkids for crying out loud. We're working on this vaccination thing. That's how we get rid of it. Get vaccinated, okay? Some people are not for the vaccinations, that's fine, you can have that too, but vaccinations work and most of the people are getting vaccinated. Mr. Freeland, I'm doing the best that I can do. That's all you ask for, right? Please, get behind the vaccinations. Think about it, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that child is protected. The mask only does it during school. So please, let's get away from the masks. They work if you don't want to use it. I hope this policy passes, it's the best thing we have. Thank you, thanks for putting up with me.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson, did you want to speak again? No.
So, Mr. Ingersoll, I, as, when it comes to my, and I really don't know that I should be defending every time I say something, that I have to defend what it is I'm saying. And so, the numbers I have here are taken from the website. I did not make these up, I did not manipulate these numbers. The numbers that I quoted came from the website and from an email sent to me from Mr. Jen, just so you know. Thank you.
Okay. Any others?
Are you going to say something first?
Pardon? No.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I agree with Jack in that we need to get the people vaccinated. But while we're doing that, and I believe I heard you say you believe in masks, so while we're doing that, we need to mask up. We can't really social distance because we've got all the kids back in school, so it's like, you know, we have to be real with that. It's not a whole lot of social distancing being done right now. But there's several different things that need to be in place in order to really defeat this virus. Madam Chair, I am putting a proposal on the floor for action. My proposal is that I motion to amend and ratify Policy 2.91 from face covering requirements with parental opt-outs to a face covering mandate with medical exceptions proven.
Dr. Mills, am I hearing that you're offering an amendment to the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, ma'am. Amendment ratifying that motion that's on the floor.
Okay. If I could, just for the record, ask you to write that out so that it'll be part of the permanent record, but would you restate just what you want the amendment to say, please?
Yes, ma'am. I would like the amendment to be for the Policy 2.91 to say face coverings mandatory with proven medical exceptions only.
Board members, is there a second to this amendment?
Madam Chairman, right now we have a motion and a second.
It's my motion.
And it's her motion.
It is my motion and Dr. Mills says every right in the world asks me to amend my motion. I'm not going to do that. The motion, I think you supported this a month ago and I'm going to keep the motion the same. I go with the narrative I gave about Mr. Jen's figures and I'm going to keep my motion the same. I want the policy to stay the same it's been and that's my motion. Thank you.
I'm thinking I'm following Robert's Rules of Orders, Mr. Harrell. When there's an amendment offered and a second for it, then we can discuss that. We're not voting on the original motion, we're voting on whether to entertain that amendment.
That's correct. Madam Chair, you would be simply taking action on the amendment first, but the underlying motion stays unchanged until and unless amended.
Okay, so all I'm looking for now is, is there a second solely for the amendment that Dr. Mills has offered?
Second.
We have a second.
And Madam Chair, if I could, just to be sure that we understand that if the amendment were to pass, we need to be sure because we are talking about a policy. If my understanding, Dr. Mills, your amendment would essentially delete the new language, the parent opt-out language from the draft as presented, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I'm looking at, you know, not forever, but at the next time we come back to a regular meeting, we can look at it again, but for the next 30 days.
Well, that doesn't impact, Dr. Mills, if I might, this emergency order is in effect through December 13th.
Yes, I know, I know, but if things improve within our district as a result of mandating the masks, then we can look at revising or what have you, but right now...
That's not part of your amendment, though. Your amendment is solely to strike the parental choice.
Yes, to answer you, attorney, yes, that would be taken out.
Madam Chair, I don't understand, it must work different than city council because I have a motion on the floor. I was asked to add an amendment, I do not want to add an amendment. If my second doesn't want to keep a second there, I can understand, then there could be another motion. I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, and I'd like to call a vote. My motion does include an opt-out in the same policy that we had one month ago.
We have to take a vote on the amendment only, whether to add it to the motion. We have an amendment and a second. We are going to vote on that amendment only.
Yes, on the recommendation, on Mr. Jen's recommendation.
No, this is not Mr. Jen's recommendation, this is an amendment to his recommendation.
Right.
If this motion, if this amendment motion fails, then we go and vote on Mr. Jen's recommendation, which we have a motion and a second for.
Let me put it this way, my motion would keep the same policy that we have in right now as we had a month ago.
That means you would vote against this amendment. Okay? Everyone clear? Any other comments?
Do I still have a second?
There is, for the amendment, Ms. Richardson offered the second, for the amendment only. What we are voting for at this particular time is to strike the parental option from the policy. If you are in favor of striking the parental option from the policy, say aye.
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 If you are against striking parental option from the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three in favor of the amendment, three against it, therefore the amendment fails. We will now vote on the original motion, which we have a motion from Mr. Kelly, a second from Mr. Ingersoll, to enact the recommendation of the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Proposed.
Okay. Motion carries three to two. We now close that portion of our public hearing and will move now to our special thanks and recognitions. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Call Ms. Martin up at this time?
Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Jen, at this time I'd like to recognize our September STAR Awards. The first is a trio, William Wampler, Robert DiAmato, and Thomas Utz. These individuals were nominated by Assistant Principal Rodriguez at Sam Gaines Academy. They state recently the sound system in the auditorium at Sam Gaines crashed during a professional development. Rob was very responsive and had a plan to repair the system within 30 minutes. First thing the next morning, as promised, he was on campus with Tom, who had a loaner soundboard for the school to use while they were being repaired. Bill was also there to provide additional technical support. The school was very grateful for their prompt assistance and for the fact that they cared enough to make sure things were working well before they left. This trio deserves to be recognized for their amazing service. So congratulations, and I know Tom Utz is in the building. Have you come up? Next, we have Julia Hillburn and Lori Boyer. These individuals were nominated by Dr. Helen Wild, Chief Academic Officer. Julia and Lori have been doing an ongoing podcast, a first for St. Lucie Public Schools, to teach and celebrate the use of technology in and for our classrooms. They use this method as an innovative way to reach our teachers, parents, and students because this is the way many people get their information now. During each episode, they highlight new features to increase ease and use of, increase ease of use, expand capabilities, or increase engagement and efficiency. They also celebrate teachers who they see utilizing technology in creative ways. Their podcast is called Tech Up/Check Up: Girl Tech Innovators. So congratulations to these two deserving STAR recipients, Lori and Julia. And they're here as well, so they can come on up.
Congratulations to all of you and thank you for what you do every day.
Those are, that's the conclusion of the STAR Awards.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We will at this time then move to our ESOL report. Mr. Freeland, if you would come to the podium. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hawley, board members Richardson, Kelly, Mills, Ingersoll, and Superintendent Jen. Not really sure I know where to start. I want to put a couple of things in perspective, say a few things. Hopefully, numbers will keep going down, we won't be here to talk about masks again, but I think there's some important points I'd like to make. First of all, the 11% number for opt-outs, I'm sure is accurate, but I am not sure that's what's happening in classes. It's very, very difficult for teachers to actually police who has and has not opted out. There are more students than that who are not wearing masks, at least during the day. I've been in schools, I've seen it. It's something that my members have communicated regularly, that there's really no way to police that. They try, they've got the list in Skyward, but it's very, very difficult to police. I heard a lot of numbers tonight, so I'll try not to go too crazy here. We've heard the St. Lucie County numbers, but let's talk about Florida for a second. Last month, and I'll tie this to some things that we all have been talking about in current events, last month, a little over 4,900 people died in Florida from COVID. That's twice the number of people who died in 20 years of war in Afghanistan, American Also, 43,979 people have died in the state of Florida in a year. That's 16 times the number of people who died in the Twin Towers on September 11th. I think it's very easy to talk about these numbers and not realize what they mean, but each one of those people, every one of them, belonged to somebody. They were somebody's mother, somebody's father, somebody's daughter, son, a minister, a congregant, grandmother, grandfather, teacher, student, they belonged to somebody, they're people. I just feel, and this is not me speaking as the union president, I'll do that in a second, this is me speaking just as a person, I feel that we have minimized the impact of COVID to our state, to just look at these big numbers and wash our hands of it. In light of those numbers, I'm almost at a loss for words that we are still arguing about or discussing or debating really the simplest of mitigation methods that we have, and that's to wear a mask. I know we've taken the vote, but I don't think this is over. I hope it is, I hope I'm wrong. But we have to look at those numbers and take them very seriously. We have to look at what it's doing to our community and I have to look at what it's doing to our members and our students. And I'll give you an example. One of my executive board members, right now is dealing with COVID-related pneumonia. This person's vaccinated. She teaches young children, younger than 12, who can't be vaccinated, many of whom in her classes were unmasked. It's a big concern for her because she has members of her household who are immunocompromised and she's been very, very careful not to go places where she could get it. And this is becoming an issue for our members in our union as well. Our teachers and our support staff are there every day. They are in this environment. They feel very scared, I don't know a better word for it. They're scared when they see students unmasked. I'm very proud of the work that we have done together for things like COVID leave, I really am, so I want to mention that before I continue. Not every district in Florida has any kind of COVID leave, so we've done good work. We've amended the LOU a couple of times to try and make it better. So I don't want to diminish what we've done together, I really don't. But it's very hard for our members to continue to go into that environment and not know if they're going to be paid if they get sick, that we have to prove that somehow we got it at work. And of the districts who do have COVID leave, to my... to my knowledge, we're the only one that has a requirement that we show that the infection came from work. It's generating another problem. I know three cases now where people have come to sick work rather than get a COVID test, because they can't afford to be out of work. And unfortunately, have made other people ill in the process, because we've got a system that encourages people to come to work when they're sick. And so if there's two things I want to say tonight is, please remember, we talk about these numbers. We tend to minimize these numbers. We talk about them in the abstract, but they're really big numbers, just in the state of Florida. And all of those people are somebody's people. And I don't want to be standing here at any point, like my sister had to do in Indian River County, where they've had two teachers die from COVID, and talk about how maybe they were preventable, maybe we could have done more. We are doing the best we can with other mitigation. I'm not here to beat up anybody. We are cleaning. We are trying to socially distance, but these are schools. They were never designed for that. You've already taken the vote on masks, and, you know, and that's the way these things work. I certainly will stick to what our policy as a union has been, to listen to the science. It's not to disrespect the work other people have done doing their Google research or wherever they've gotten it from. But scientists have protocols in place for research to prevent confirmation bias, all of those things that interfere. And I respect the decision that the board has made. I'm going to be honest, I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's your job to make those decisions. It's not mine. But I'm just, I'm concerned for our community, but I'm also very, very concerned for our members. And I will say the least we can do is make sure that they have a soft landing financially if they do become ill. So I would like to revisit our COVID leave, again, not because we've done anything wrong, not because they don't appreciate the work we've done. I want to be very, very clear about that, that we've worked hard to get where we're at. Again, we've amended it two or three times to try and make it better. But if we're asking our members, our employees, to go into these situations that may be unsafe, they just need to know that they've got at least a soft landing financially if something happens. And that's all I have to say, and I want to thank you for your time and the work that you do, even when I don't agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Anyone here from CWA? Hey. Welcome, Ms. Vickers. It's good to see you.
It's been a long day.
It has indeed, especially for you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and Dr. and Mr. Gent. I'll just get up and talk about the bus driver. We have a serious job. A lot of our drivers was out with the COVID. And a lot of children on my bus that, how I know they're out with the COVID, their parents had to call us and let me and my aide know. That was nice of them telling us. So we tried to quarantine everyone and all, but some say that the parents, like drivers say that the children say they can't, they opt out with the mask. But we don't know they opt out or not. They just tell the driver that. We should have a list of names that opt out, and then the drivers will know who supposed to have masks, sit them in the back or wherever from the other children. But we have a serious job. I've been out here a long time. I'm out here because I like driving buses. I've been here forty-some years. And I just want you all to think about the bus drivers and then custodial workers, CWA unit. How can, it can make them better safe in the COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers. And now, Representative of our Youth Advisory Council, Mr. Baca, welcome to the stadium, to the podium. Appreciate your patience tonight.
Good evening, Chairwoman Holly, School Members, and Superintendent Gent. My name is Christian Baca. I will be serving as the de facto chairman for the 2021 to 2022 St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. And Erica Mormon will be serving as the de facto secretary. I want to provide an update on Youth Advisory Council organizational proceedings. So foremost, over the past several weeks, I have begun meeting with the student government associations at each public high school within our district to share the mission and platform of this Youth Advisory Council. We expect to have all Youth Advisory Council members identified by September 27th of 2021. We intend to hold our first meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams in the beginning of October, with subsequent meetings being held on a monthly basis with a hybrid model of in-person and virtual meetings. Further, working alongside Chief Communication Officer, Ms. Martin, our council will be establishing a social presence on Instagram to more effectively interact with the student body. Our vision of the social media platform is to be a means to disseminate information to students, share updates of Youth Advisory Council and schoolwork proceedings, and provide serving slash polling capabilities. We also intend to frequently recognize student achievement in both academic and extracurricular fields through this platform. This platform will also be used to amplify district-wide efforts to reduce the spread of COVID-19, such as including information concerning vaccine clinics across the county. While the action has already been voted on, I would like to share my perspective as the representative of the student body. In regards to the St. Lucie Public Schools mask policy, on behalf of the student body, I encourage the board to continue to implement the current mask policy as is. The current policy provides flexibility for those on either side of the debate. Additionally, for the most part, over 88% of students are wearing masks. I bring a unique perspective to this podium, as I'm in the St. Lucie Public Schools classrooms each and every day as a student. Of the approximate 75 students that were in my classes today, only two were not wearing masks. Even more, many students whose parents have opted out of the mask requirement have continued to wear their masks out of respect for their peers. Therefore, I would like to recognize that the number of students who have opted out of the mask requirement is not reflective of the amount of students not wearing masks. The amount of students not wearing masks is likely significantly lower. The safety and health of our students should always be our first priority. However, the implementation of a mandatory mask policy with no opt-out procedure will likely not yield a significant decrease in the spread of COVID-19. Lastly, as many of you are aware, this morning Governor DeSantis announced his intent to end the Florida Standards Assessment, FSA, testing following the 2021 to 2022 school year. As representative of the student body, I would like to commend that decision, as this change will hopefully provide more flexibility slash time for teaching and learning, and streamline the progression assessment process. Once again, I want to thank Chairwoman Holly, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gent, as well as District Administration, for recognizing the Youth Advisory Council as a platform for raw and authentic student voice. We look forward to the possibilities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. We appreciate your commitment and all the hard work you've done, and really enjoy having your voice as part of our meetings. Thank you. And Ms. Martin, thank you to you as well for helping them motivate through the media part of it. I appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on now to our consent agenda. Board Members, we have the agenda before us. I have a motion to adopt as presented, please.
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Before we do that, are there any items that board members wish to remove for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, we do have a motion for approval from Mr. Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Then move to our Superintendent and Staff Reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recognize Dr. Thelma Jackson. If she would come up to the podium, if she's still awake. And Dr. Jackson is, was, came to us a month ago. She is, has served in Okeechobee County in the last four years, or four or five years, and has some of the highest scores there. She has served in Glades County. She has served in Georgia. She has served in Palm Beach County, in some of our most challenging schools. And she's coming to us, working in the role right now with it, because of the DA status at CA Moore of a turnaround principal, which she has proven she has. And so, Dr. Jackson, I will turn it over to you and say welcome.
Thank you all for the opportunity. What I've shared with the staff at CA Moore is, we will never let a crisis go to waste. This is a crisis that we're going to use to turn ourselves around and improve and make you all proud. So we're looking forward to it. I'm also thankful for all of the folks, such as Dr. Harrington and the entire team, Dr. Prince, Mr. Frank. Everyone has been extremely supportive, so there are super systems in place. And I do believe, wholeheartedly, that CA Moore is going to turn it around, and you are going to be very proud of what comes out of that next year.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome again. I told staff to get out of her way. Let her do her thing. And as was mentioned before, and I'm going to do this every month, I'm going to take pictures. I'm going in classrooms. I've been in classes the last two days to try to, again, to have our focus on teaching and learning as well. And I just want to share on the screen right now, this is Ms. Jessica Thacker's kindergarten class. And I was in that class today. And those boys and girls, and you can see them there, they've got the little stuffed animal dogs. And they were, through Tom Jones and the Ed Foundation, the Play With A Purpose supplies that come to the school, they were all veterinarians. And the task that they were given was that that dog has an earache. And they were to take care of those dogs. And so you can see the children masked up. You can see them with their hospital gear on, or their doctor gear, and their stethoscopes, and all of their equipment there. And they, you couldn't get them, you couldn't get them quiet. I mean, they were just having a good, I like to go in classes and rile them up, but I didn't need to rile these guys up. They were pumped up. So I want to thank Ms. Thacker. There's also a picture there of Ms. Lamb, the principal, and just wanted to share that with the students. And thank Tom Jones as well, and the Ed Foundation. I know Dr. Mills serves on that, you know, for that grant, and for, you can see those toys that are there for the students. And, Dr., Mr. Kelly, you may have a future vet there that can help you out with your dog. And also, I'm just going to, the other things I'll talk about next month, but I do, it was mentioned by our student representative regarding the end of high-stakes testing. That comes in next year. That's not this year. That'll be next year. And the fact that we'll be doing a progress monitoring is something that those that have been doing this for a while knows that that's the best method to take. And we've been pushing for that for about 25 years in Tallahassee. So to see that that come to fruition, we'll work out the details with that. But this year still will be, the FSA testing, our school still will be graded. But it is a, we'll see, you know, the devil's in the details, and we'll see where that goes with it. But it's a promising sign, where you can truly measure students through the course of the year as they're progressing, as opposed to what really, really wasn't, and by their own admissions in the, in the press release, you know, probably wasn't the most academically sound method of evaluating our students. And I know everybody on this board has been talking about that for many, many years, whether as a board member or a parent. And so that's good news, and we'll continue to. We'll update the board when we get more information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harrell, you have a couple of items for us tonight, or one specifically?
Just the one item. Madam Chair, thank you. This year, the census data has been late in coming. And we had expected by now that the board would have been briefed on the effect on your member residence areas. Those member residence areas, by statute, are to be retained as close as possible, equal in population. The changes can only occur in an odd-numbered year. They typically have occurred in the first year following the release of the census. Because of the delay in getting the information, the districts partner, the Board of County Commissioners and their staff, who have typically worked up the numbers, taken the census data, and developed potential maps for member residence areas, they've been delayed in that process. But it's my understanding, and with the superintendent's permission, possibly refer to Mr. Sanders, who is your contact person there. But it's looking like toward the end of this month, the county commissioner's staff will have several alternatives that would be available, and they will begin to share those with the Board of County Commissioners. They anticipate having a couple of public meetings, informal workshop and a public meeting. Given that in the past, the school board member residence areas have been co-terminous with the Board of County Commissioner residence areas, although differently numbered. The, Mr. Sanders has provided information regarding your residences. The county commission then has taken their board member residences, and they will use those in formulating the alternative, so that there will not be a member who is displaced in the map drawing process. So the alternatives that you would likely see here within the next few weeks will change the size of the districts, but you would not be changing district numbers. And Mr. Sanders, or Mr. Superintendent, if there's anything I've left out that, at this time, given that there's very little information available, I think all that the board is able to do now would be simply to give direction to the superintendent and staff to continue to work with the county in formulating those maps, and come forward in a coordinated fashion to adopt. There is not a great deal of formality associated with the adoption process. Historically, I think I indicated in my memorandum, you've adopted a resolution. It sets forth the legal descriptions following a public meeting that's advertised, and you've advertised what those will be. And that's essentially the process. It's fairly straightforward. The problem is, we've got a very constricted time period in which to work. And the Board of County Commissioners does not anticipate acting until the first week of December. So this board will have to keep in close coordination with the Board of County Commissioners in order to achieve that kind of schedule. Because recall again, these changes can only occur in an odd-numbered year. Unless there's any question, I had no other report. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, we'll assume then that you and Mr. Sanders will stay on top of that and bring back as it becomes available.
Absolutely. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell, for your report. And we will then move on to school board member reports. The first item we have, I had mentioned last month, in light of Mr. Harrell's retirement and Mr. Ferguson's retirement, we are looking as to how we will shape our legal counsel going forward. And after working with Mr. Gent and Ms. Thomas in the Finance Department, it makes good financial sense, as well as logistical sense, for us to stick with the model that we have now, wherein we have our own in-house legal department. So going forward, HR will begin to advertise the position for in-house services. And then we, as a board, will interview prospective folks to become our attorney, the person that would represent the board, if that is okay with you all. Any questions?
How far are you going to, are you going to advertise? Are we going nationwide or just Florida?
Well, I have enlisted the help of the Florida School Board Attorneys Association.
Okay, okay.
And they are working with us to get names. Good question. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. So what will be the process of that?
For our attorney?
For our attorney, yes, ma'am.
We, working with this group, they have, will identify two or three folks that would be interested. Some may not be interested, and of course, leaving the district that they're in. When we know the ones that want to come and interview with us, we'll set up a time that we'll interview them. And the process, given Mr. Harrell's retirement of October 30th, I'd like to expedite and have that underway.
So it'll be like finding a superintendent?
Superintendent, exactly.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, is everybody okay to move forward on those? Ms. Richardson?
I had a suggestion, maybe that we could, during the advertising, screening, and hiring process, I would like to see maybe each board member nominate a citizen panel, who could be a part of the application screening and interviewing process as well.
Okay, that's, certainly we'll consider that. This is, we've done that for superintendent searches, so the legal counsel is so limited and defined, we'll, we'll talk that around, and I'll get Mr. Harrell's input on it as well. Thank you for the suggestion.
Hiring a superintendent and a school board attorney is probably two of the most important decisions that we are going to make, because they are around for a long, for a long time.
And that's.
So I think that we should really do our due diligence. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Other board members having a report? Mr. Kelly, we'll begin with you tonight.
I have nothing other than the fact that I did, I wanted to give credit to Mr. Gent, and I sincerely believe what I said about the mask and versus getting vaccinated. The vaccinations are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Masks are in schools so many times. I did steal that from Mr. Gent, so I just want to give him credit for it. Great minds, okay? But I did. It's, it's just absolutely true. I've thought about it and said it to other people, but when he reminded me of that, I brought it up, and I hope that sticks with everyone, because it's absolutely true. 24/7, not just during the day in school, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Mills? Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, sports are going well. I went out and watched a couple of the volleyball teams, and the schools are doing a phenomenal job. I want to thank Mr. Gent for cleaning the old central land, getting the old trailers off. I drive by there all the time, and want to appreciate you for keeping that up. I want to thank our bus drivers, our support staff, and all that they're doing to keep our children safe, and like Ms. Martha said, or Ms. Mary said, is, you know, that they are vital to our system, and I want to thank them.
Ms. Richardson?
I'd like to thank everyone, well, they're gone right now, for coming out today to have their voices heard. I want to thank our teachers and staff for their ability to conquer the challenges set before them with strength, for their ability to be flexible, to adapt to their ever-changing environment, and their commitment to our students. I would also like to thank our parents for patience, as we work through these very abnormal times. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.